Start?
No, I'll give it.
Stuff that's like not.
No, I'll just give her a minute because I think it'll be real quick. So I'm not sure where she went, but I think we'll give it a minute or two. There is, yeah. There should be right there. All set? All set, Jake? Good evening. Welcome to the June 3rd Select Board meeting. Let's stand for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the first thing on the agenda is not specifically Kermit, but the cemetery paving. Do you want to come up and speak? Does anyone else want to speak before Kermit gets going? Do you have anything, Beth, or do you want Kermit to go first?
I think he can go first.
Okay.
We can have our discussion as part of our discussion.
And hammer me or whatever you want to do.
Beth.
I'm just, excuse me. I'm just going to recap. Some of this may be redundant for some people, but for others it's not. Article 17 in 2023 town meeting was approved for two roads at $60,000. A members committee was voted and approved by the select board to oversee this project. The highway superintendent agreed in our earliest meetings to be the project manager. And this is the important part. In our 8/27 meeting, the project manager, Ryan, stated that, and I will read his words, "The scope of the work needs to be detailed according to the specifications determined by the committee." We also discussed five roads at that meeting, not two. He also said that the committee, and the committee voted unanimously, and it was accepted, that the committee appointments be extended if necessary so that after the bids is accepted, the committee can then prioritize which roads to pave and seal. So I'm not sure why this article has been submitted, the Article 26, because we have not completed our responsibilities as we voted on at that meeting unanimously. We have only voted on having chip seal. We have not voted on the size, the color, the width of the road, where the roads start and end, roads to be prioritized after the bids are, is received, as we agreed to unanimously in our 8/7/23 meeting. There have been multiple reasons why the committee has not completed their assignments. Most centered around that the highway, the first highway superintendent resigned in October 23, and since that time, almost a year and a half, there have been four permanent and temporary highway superintendents, this project being a lower priority than other projects and issues with their, with their new job. So my recommendations from the group, for members of the past committee, why not have an appointed, an appointed committee meet to resolve the scope of work as we agreed to in our 8/7/23 meeting and when that assignment expires? That said, I would also say, as a taxpayer, I hope that this project, I hope that for this project, less costly but equally acceptable options will be considered than what was originally proposed in our early meetings. Any questions?
I'm good.
Nope, I'm good. I'm good.
All set?
So let me just go over the legality. I know last time we spoke, Peter had some thoughts that the select board would oversee it, or could oversee the contract based on the monies. But in speaking with Ron and town council, I am not positive that that's the case.
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
So I do want to, I do want to just kind of hash that out now.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and it's kind of interesting. I don't think Peter said that we could oversee the project.
Not oversee, but we always saw it as the, the final say in town over contracts.
Right, or, well, it's one of those things, it's almost like we have veto authority, though we don't have any, we don't have any control, but we have veto authority, was basically what his point was, was that, that fundamentally, if we felt that the contract presented before us was not in compliance with the preservation plan and was not in keeping with the guidance we got from the town meeting, which was to stay in keeping with the preservation plan, that we had the right to not enter into a contract with the contractor to do the work, which is very different than us having purview over the project.
Right.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah, no, no, I get it.
So, so that, to me, that's what Peter was proposing, was not that we have any explicit say or control over what the commission does or doesn't do from a standpoint of what they might choose to, to do or not do, other than we have the power of the purse, and if what was proposed and in the contract was not in keeping with that preservation plan, we do have the right not to approve the contract. We don't have a legal right to enter into the contract to do the work.
So in talking to, and I'm okay with that if that's the case, and I'm not looking to circumvent that in any way, or I'm hoping that the committee, the cemetery committee with the paving committee will come to the same terms and do the right thing aesthetically for the historical commission, the whole thing. But my direct question, Ron, is do, is what Beth's saying, is that correct based on?
That's correct. So according to.
I just want to confirm it.
No, absolutely. I'm just, and I'm just restating what Peter's proposal was. I wanted to make sure we were clear on what he was saying, that's all.
Yeah, according to Master General Law, Chapter 114, Section 23, basically, the cemetery commissioners are gone when it comes to the cemetery. However, as Beth pointed out, from a contract perspective, the board of selectmen, or the select board, has the power of the purse, so to speak. Obviously, the, the authority to sign contracts rests with the select board. If you hire a vendor, go and try to enter into a contract from the cemetery commissioner's standpoint, they can't sign that contract. Only the select board can sign that contract for the road pavinger or whatever they do. So.
Well, fair enough then, because I was, you know, I was under the impression that each committee in town that's elected had, so, so I learned something tonight, so. All right.
I do have a question. I know there's been talking about when the term ends and, but I'm not sure I understand why there was some discussion about the term ending before we had completed our task when we voted unanimously to say that we have to have a detailed scope of work and our job is not finished, and we voted unanimously.
So I think the sticky point there is at the town meeting, the original article got amended, and then it talked about within how many days?
To provide a report.
Yeah, within three months or something.
So that's the part that didn't stay adhered to. However, I feel like, and I'm probably not going to be real popular over this, but I do feel like the committee should be in place until the task is done, and that's why.
But, but we all, beyond that, Mr. Chairman, we voted, and I'll repeat it again, that we request that our term be extended until we complete the task that we set, the scope of work and get the bids.
I do understand that, but I'm just going back to the article on the town hall floor, which really carries a lot of weight, right? So it talks about the two roads, but, but I do know, I will go with the intent, the intent of that was not necessarily to end in 90 days. I, I thought the intent was that it probably would be completed in the 90, and then the committee wouldn't need to be in place after that, but based on it being completed, I think was the intent.
Here's, here's the thought, and fundamentally, it's, I think it's divisible, and, and that's where it starts to get tricky, right? So the absolute minimum, which was voted at town meeting, that we're on our usual schedule for getting stuff down, done from a town meeting vote, but that's neither here nor there, which is that, terribly light, okay, is that the town meeting vote set a minimum requirement on us to establish the paving committee, okay, for them to deliver a report with their recommendations for the project, okay? Now, one of their recommendations for the project that was not delivered in a formal report, but was delivered in the form of the minutes, was their request for either an extended charter beyond the scope of the town meeting vote, which we can, it's one of those things you can always add, you can't subtract, or, because it's a divisible topic, the establishment of a, of like a, similar to like when we had the Highway Barn Committee that did that and the Police Station Committee that did that, that either that the committee would include in its charter or have an expanded charter beyond the town meeting requirement for us to also somewhat oversee the project or to establish a similarly constituted committee for the purpose. It was going to be part of their recommendations coming from the committee based on what's reflected in their minutes. So now that, now whether to take that advice or not is, is at the pleasure of the board, right? But minimum requirement is paving committee providing their recommendations and establishing the scope of the project. Additional duties as assigned or not assigned at the pleasure of the select board would be the oversight of the project. So we would not be running counter to the town meeting vote by expanding the scope or reconstituting the committee post recommendation for the purposes of project management, okay? But in failing to get a, a committee recommendation, we would be flying in the face of the town meeting vote.
Exactly.
So, here's my thought on it.
Anything else for me?
I think we need to get the board assembled, the, the committee assembled. I know Steve has had, so Steve, did you agree to join, is that, from the conservation?
Yeah.
I think we'll need to get Steve appointed, get our new highway superintendent appointed, as well as the other members, so that we meet the task of the original article and then continue to move forward.
I would, I think we would agree with that. The members that were not here, I'll talk to them about that, that's all.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion that we reconstitute the committee as described by the chair.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's on Thursday's agenda. The names need to be pointed just.
Great, that's awesome.
So we'll, we'll address that a week from Thursday, though?
You'll address it Thursday, right?
Right before the town meeting.
Yeah, but we got that half hour meeting.
Yep.
Yes.
It is on the agenda?
Yeah.
For the, for Steve and Kyle and?
Yeah, it's on the agenda for Kermit, Peter, Kyle, Ron, and Steve. Still, who else?
I'm hoping you haven't remembered.
Yes, we need one more historical and one more conservation commission both working on that, okay?
Okay.
That would be enough to constitute a quorum, even if there wasn't a couple.
Yep, so as of Thursday, 6:15, the committee will have a quorum and we can start to meet.
Okay.
Yeah, I said as of Thursday, yeah, Thursday, say at 6:15 or so, once the select board have officially appointed everyone, that would constitute, granted, there would still be two vacancies for that committee, but you would still have a quorum, so you could go ahead and start to, to meet.
So what's going to happen to the, question I have, what's going to happen to the Article 26 at the town meeting?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I think it's going to shake out on the town floor.
Okay.
Because frankly, that article is who has off the authority of the $60,000. Per town council, based back in 2023, with that particular motion, it was the town council's opinion that the cemetery department, cemetery commissioners, had sole authority over that $60,000. The new article in this year's annual town meeting is basically saying exactly that, to see if the town would back providing sole authority of the $60,000 to the cemetery commission, but they already have it.
See, and one, and here's what's kind of killer about that, and, and I don't know if they want to try to fix it in the motion or, or whatnot. The original motion on the original article was so restrictive and ill-advised, and I'm not even, I'm not talking about the committee, I'm talking about the two roads, right? Because, and I know there's a lot of people smarter than me in the room about the right materials and the right methodology and the right everything, okay? All I know is, is, you know, what I learned 20 years ago in the Army doing, doing some gravel roads and, you know, what I know from walking it today and having a few conversations with people over the last couple of months and a little bit of Dr. Google, okay? But $60,000 is a little bit of money for doing roads, and it's also a huge amount of money for doing roads, depending on how we decide to do those roads.
Two roads.
Right, and it's only two roads. I think appropriately planned, executed, collaborated with, we could probably do twice as many roads for not even quite all of that money, right? In a sufficient way that would be good for a decade, maybe a dozen years, might need to put a little more money in at that point.
But even if it's just touched up like, like what we did down there the other day before, right?
Exactly, right.
And the road is, I haven't been down since Memorial Day.
Oh, it's, it's holding up nice. I mean, it, it looks good, and, and from what I understand of road construction, which like I said, I don't have 30 some odd years of doing it, but I've got, I've had my toe in and out of it for, off and on for a couple dozen years, is that the work that was done down there could provide, it would be like the pre-work that, that could be done to some of those other roads before we brought somebody in to do the top coat.
Absolutely.
And it would hold up pretty good. For the amount of traffic you get down there and stuff, that would be, that would take us a long way to what we need, and even in the interim before we got there with the chip seal guy, would at least make those roads pass.
People are not bottoming out, and it looks good.
It looks, it looks good, it's respectable, and if I remember correctly, that is allowable material under the preservation plan, because even though it's ground asphalt, it basically counts as gravel, and graveling is one of the acceptable means of maintaining that road. So, I mean, to me, that's just a win-win-win personally, but, so, so I think that's part of the narrative, and, and maybe we're smart about it, and we leverage the fact that they have a nonsensical article that basically says the same thing, but doesn't mention the two roads in the text of the article, to empower the cemetery commissioners to, with the funds currently within their control, address as many of the roads as possible down there, which would also get us out of the damn loophole relative to the having voted two roads. I mean, to me, that's, to me, the, the good news story about that article is we could actually unchain ourselves and be able to take care of whatever we manage to take care of with the appropriate resources, and/or if we use those funds as matching funds and maybe get a little money out of the, out of the state or not, you know, it gives us a lot of flexibility and opportunities. That's, that's kind of where my head is about that article, and I think that's where we need to encourage the town meeting to go, them being the legislature, and, and, you know, we can write, one, one of two ways, encourage people to pass it over or vote no, so that the 2023 vote stands, or try to use that article to actually.
I think it, I think it might make sense for either the cemetery committee or the cemetery paving committee to have something prepared that really makes sense for the town meeting, to amend the article to a specific written, so we're not trying to write it out at the town meeting, like we have in the past, right?
Well, well, typically, typically, anything that's on the warrant, and I don't know if we've gotten the motions yet from town council, right?
She just reviewed them and we finalized them.
Okay, so is there a draft in my email and I just didn't get to it?
You can have it in your inbox by tonight.
Okay, thank you. You know, I don't know how they may have framed it up, but we may want to consult and see if, if we want to clean it up, because we don't typically write them on the floor unless somebody decides.
Well, that one did get changed originally in 23, right?
Oh, it got changed on the floor because of the, because of the.
How convoluted it was.
Well, it was convoluted because, like, like was said before, that what was being proposed flew in the face of, of what had been usual and customary about how to manage those things, so. And I think that was a case where people felt the work needed to happen, so they wanted to say yes, but they couldn't say yes in the original state of the, the article. So I think one of the things we ought to do is share whatever verbiage we have on that article with the commissioners, but then also review it, and I know it's not on our meeting agenda probably, though, is, weren't generically on our agenda for that meeting?
Yes, review it. So, yeah, it's just review, so it's very generic.
So, so I think we could at least talk about if there do, if there does need to be any verbiage changes to make certain that not only are we just reaffirming that, yes, the funding is there, and yes, the cemetery commission is responsible for the cemetery, but yes, if we can do the work smarter, we can do more than two roads.
I think it might make sense for you to speak to Mike and see if one of the other cemetery commissioners would have some input on that, and so we can move forward in a positive way.
Agree, yeah, I can certainly reach out to Mike tomorrow. I can maybe even come up with, you know, some draft language that I could run by town council, we could clean it up and.
And speaking with Mike, just maybe yesterday, he said he's, he went down, he looked at the work that the highway did with the volunteers, and based on that, he's, he's good, happy to see the, the work, and no one's bottoming out, so I think if, I think they'll be amenable to sitting down to do it in a positive way.
I think that's a win for everybody.
Just one clarification, when you said on Thursday, you, we need to have some, give me this, what are you asking for from that committee?
I'm asking Ron to see if he can meet with either the chair or Mike Siri, that's sometimes represents the board, that look for some verbiage so that we have it ahead of time on the article. If we're going to amend the article, that it's specific on where it starts, it's specific on the color, it's a specific on width of the road.
Essentially, the scope of work.
The scope of work, yeah. And I think, you know, I, I honestly think it's a breakdown in communication, because I believe the cemetery commission is in favor of doing, doing pretty much what you've kind of pointed out.
Yeah, well, it's, it's what we agreed to.
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay, thanks for your time.
All right, have a good night. Number two, sign. Come on up.
Dave Holcraft, 26 Allen Road, South Brookfield. You know, are you guys listening to yourself? How many meetings have we had talking about this? We're talking about paving a few roads, asphalt, we're not, we're not redesigning the cemetery, we're going to repave the roads if it's, if it's this width or that width, it's whatever the road is, we're going to repave it. Listening to you, listening to you, Kermit, how many times are you going to come in here and talk about chip seal? Who cares?
So wait a second, I don't think in policy if we're, it's appropriate to be like.
Okay, anyway, just let me finish, okay, Beth?
Okay.
We listen to you, we listen to you run your mouth, listen to my mouth, okay? Thank you. Just pave the roads with this chip seal, it's a cemetery, it's been paved down there for how many years with pavement? What is the problem here? You pave the roads, that's it. You don't have to be worrying about every little width and length, you know what the roads are, you're going to repave it. What's the problem? And if you want to stretch the $60,000, rent, rent a paving machine with someone to run it, let the highway department go get the pavement, we got a rolling pin, we got manpower, we can do all the roads for 60 grand, and that's pretty much what Beth was trying to say, we can get it done. We're talking about chip seal and this and that, back and forth and this. You're going to listen to yourself, just pave the roads. It's been, the roads have been paved down there for years. What's the problem now? Huh? Come on, it's been three years since we voted the money. Let's get it done. We don't need any wrenches in the works.
I'm going to speak for the, for Kermit and what he's, so we have a preservation plan that, as a result of the preservation plan, Dave, we've been able to secure approximately $125,000 in grants.
Yeah.
We've also, because of that preservation plan, it's very clear on aesthetically for the cemetery, right? So most cemeteries that you go to that are historic, you don't have an 18-foot wide paved driveway going through the middle of it, right? You have kind of a nice little quaint, narrow little way, and, and what the paving committee's asking for is a chip seal to make it look a little different than just asphalt paving, but to have the same functionality of the asphalt paving. So, so as a result, Dave, you may not agree, but you know what? I'll tell you what. We also, hold on, hold on, let me speak, I didn't interrupt you. The fact of the matter is, by doing this, we may very well be able to apply for more grants and secure them, and next time that we do paving down there, it might be by a grant not coming out of town funds. So that is the premise. You're 100% right.
Put the grindings down. Honestly, we should just put the grindings down and start looking for grants.
I wouldn't be.
I'll second that, right?
Kermit, did I answer that? Okay, all right, come on up, Steve.
Catching up the speed quickly on the cemetery paving situation, and I think it would be important for us to acknowledge the historical aspect of this, that this is a preserved site, and there is a preservation plan that was put in place 25, almost 25 years ago now. I met with Mike Siri and Kermit earlier today, and I've seen that plan for the first time, and there's only a physical copy of that. So for information's sake, I think we should scan that copy.
Yeah, oh, I meant to get with you about that.
Yeah, so we can work on that. Mike, Mike has a, Mike has a clean copy in his office, and I think we should follow that plan, because that, that is in line with gaining us grants, and it's, this is a historic site. The requirements, I don't think, are that far-fetched, it's just really a matter of what materials you use, and it outlines it in a, in a paragraph. But I think just being respectful of the historic value of this property while getting the work done effectively, I think we can, can come to an agreement with just a simple, a simple conversation while respecting the authority of commissions and committees. Simple as that.
So, so I just want to say one more thing about it. The whole reason this thing even gets started is because the workers down there noticed that there were vehicles that were bottoming out on the crown of the road, and so they're looking to just remedy it, but, but not all the considerations were taken into. So I, the historical value is very important down there to continue to apply for grants. So, and Kermit has said on a couple of occasions that there's money in the preservation fund that perhaps some of that could have been used, there's, what was the other fund that is? Perpetual Care Fund. So, so with those two, perhaps we maybe only would have kicked in 30,000 from raisin appropriated free cash, and we could have used the money that's sitting down there. So I, I do think it's important that we move ahead here in a proper way.
All right, sounds good.
Thanks, Steve. All right, so we're going to move on now. So we're going to sign the end of year transfers. I believe that's just me. I believe that's just me. The next is accepting resignation on the conservation commission.
Actually, we have to vote the end-of-year transfers.
Okay.
And I did want to bounce something off the board and get your input as well with the end-of-year transfer for the fire department.
I'm sorry?
I wanted to get the board's input for potential year-end transfer for the fire department with regards to wages.
Okay.
So I want to address the ones that Lori has already written up.
Okay. Do you guys have one in your pack? So we'll go over them one at a time.
Apparently omitted it from mine, but I can look over on...
What are you looking for?
The debt. You know, I don't have my reading glasses, so I can see it from here better than I can if you give it to me.
Far away is better.
My arms aren't quite long enough, so let's go ahead.
Are we going over one by one?
Yeah. So are you ready, Beth?
Yeah.
All right, so the fire truck interest.
Do we have to make a motion for each one?
No, so we would typically, we could make the motion that we could, I would read it off, typically what I've done with these is to, yeah, we do have to read it off, because you have to note the accounts, or you can do it as submitted, right? So a lot of times I skip over the accounts when I read something off like this, and I would just read the fire truck...
Yeah, interest?
Yeah, interest at 9,412.52.
So I need to just make an informal motion so we can...
Yeah, so I make a motion that we approve the following transfers with the FARM-2 accounts as presented to us on the transfer request of the fire truck interest for 9,412.52. Fire truck long-term debt, $10,328. General insurance, $5,000. Vets caseworker, or veterans caseworker, $32,147.85. Assessor stipend, $1,000. Treasury clerk wages, $2,600. Collector clerk wages for $1,560.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question, why is the vets caseworker one so high?
Means that they had more people on the veterans benefits than what was originally budgeted for. It's one of the hardest things to predict in town, so what winds up happening is you'll have people come on, you'll have people come off, and...
Important thing to remember also is the state will reimburse up to 75% of that 18 months behind, but still get reimbursed.
Next year's, in next year's, unfortunately, it comes back to us as part of the payments from free cash, sort of.
Yeah.
It's the reimbursement is buried in there along with our assessments for certain stuff.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's a semi-funded mandate, because the veterans, the veterans benefits, the state dictates the level based on people's qualifications, and then just gives us 75% of it.
Can we have two resignations from the conservation commission?
Actually, if we could address the fire wages first. Chief Martell has put in a, once again, a transfer request for $16,000 for the fire department wages account, and the chief and I have been kind of conversing via email, and at this point, it looks like, and that's all based on call volume and what he's anticipating for the June wages as well. Currently, right now, we have a little over $300 in the account, some will say it's almost empty, and we still have all of June to go through. At this point, the chief has approximately nine, a little over $9,000 in his expense account. He has identified, actually, $9,722. He currently has in motion a garage door at $1,900, so I think since it's already in motion, we're going, we have to let that go despite the wage or the spending freeze. There is also a, the three firefighters that are currently in a recruiting class that runs through July, so there's not a lot of leeway we have unless we want them to have to start the process over again. So based upon all that, oh, and also there's $1,000 for working here, that's once again already in process. So in looking at those expenses, we probably have about $7,700 more or less that we have available in the expenses that we should be able to, once again, assuming that we do a freeze, that we would be able to towards the wages. So take that $16,000, maybe down to somewhere around $9,000. The question I have is with regards to training. I know we had had a discussion a couple of meetings or so ago with regards to training, so one of the things I wanted to bounce off the select board, see what your feelings and thoughts are. Should we, in June, only June, between now and the end of the fiscal year, try to utilize training only that is required and mandated, and anything that isn't required and mandated, we postpone or reschedule to start again in July? In essence, to try to take that, you know, approximately a $9,000 wage, maybe we can shave another couple of grand or so off of that. So I just wanted to throw that out to the board, and, you know, that way we can hopefully pare down that $16,000 at least somewhat.
I'd like to know, Peter, what is the monthly training wage if you had to, I know it would fluctuate depending on how many people show up on a Monday night, but what, because there's essentially, what, three more, three more training days this month?
Thereabouts. Can I just rewind a little bit? Because I paid bills today, a good day or two ahead of schedule for this. After paying today's bills, this does include the, does not include the garage door thing, I'm down to $7,700 right now.
Okay, without the...
Without the garage door. So potentially, if I can talk to the vendor, see if we could curtail that, if he hasn't extended himself off on it, just understand if we do, then that, the July, I forget a, I'll back up on that one. Whatever we're putting off now, I've got to hit the ground running on July. There's another big one, a 40-something-year-old water heater went out. You turn on two faucets and you get basically iced tea coming out for a while. In terms of efficiency, you talk to a local plumber, you're aware, we're looking at eventually $2,500 to put in a tankless hot water system based off natural gas. The plumbing is really easy because there's a big gas line already in place right near there, there's a big water line right there. It's a local, he actually dropped your name, because he said that it's the same system you put in all your places, Timmy. So that's coming down the road, but that can wait, but if it awaits now, it's going to be very quickly in July. So, that being said, let me look at, because there's one other, I made a call to one vendor about testing. So, testing account, 0012205705-000, has about $2,300 left in it. That can go. That can be used for anything.
Okay.
I'm not going to spend any more of that, if somebody's got a calculator.
You said 23, how much?
If somebody can do the math.
23 and 77?
Well, my old balance was, if somebody's got, ready to go, 2686.89 minus 309. I'll just write this down.
Wait a second, somehow I didn't catch that.
2686.89.
Okay, .8.
Minus 309.
I'm not doing pennies, but I got 2377.
2377, okay.
Yep.
89, okay. That's available.
Okay.
However, however you see fit, you see fit on that.
And you said currently, you have 7,700, but that does not include the 19...
That does not include the garage door, again, I can talk to the vendor and put that off, but we're only in the first one of July, there's just the routine stuff to get through, so we figure in maybe $1,000 to get me through the month if that's, if that's our failsafe point right there. Everything beyond that, I'll talk to the garage door vendor, yeah. He's a small enough outfit, if he knows it's coming, the only question there is, I really don't want, if I started this process now and then we put it off till next year and everything, depending on how his paperwork is, I need to make sure we're not running and following the accountant, though.
That you're going to find out that it's a last year...
Yeah, I don't, you know, I can work with him on that, but since it's already very public, that, okay, we started this process.
Right, but it depends on when he invoices and when he completes the work.
Right.
So it's not a, until he finishes the work, it's not a this year bill.
Right, so getting it out here, yeah, we can, I can talk to, I can get through my contact, get to him and say, hey, hit the brakes for another month, and I'll see you in July.
So do you have any idea how much it is on your monthly training?
Oh, monthly training, so June is actually a good month because we have a couple of our association events, so we did equipment maintenance and meeting last night, calendar, June. So the ninth, the ninth we could take off, the 16th we could take off, that would drop it down to two. I could easily just say, look, guys, we can't do anything one of those. So one night potentially on that, for training, and training at that point, three hours times 10 people, 30 hours, average $20 an hour.
600 bucks.
Somebody help me.
$60.
Yeah, but that's just a training aspect of it. Call volume, calendar 24, well, calendar 23, we did 168, calendar 24, we're up 208, 24% tracking right now. For calendar 25, we're on track to do about 220. So I'll see you in a year, kind of thing.
Does that mean 220 calls in the month?
No, for the year. Over calendar 25, if I extrapolate now as of like the fire call last night, we run the potential of having 220 in calendar 25, whereas like in calendar 24, we did 208, which is record-setting for that.
So how many a month? Do you broke down to that?
I don't, I mean, you can do the quick average on it, but I can...
220 divided by 12 is 50.
Just short of, yeah, 15, 16-ish, yeah. And again, in those cases, it's question of volume and severity and duration, so it's a, yeah. But the short of the two is, I submitted that payroll today, that was reflected in the request. Payroll went in today, you said there was like 300 left in that account, payroll went in today for the middle of April through May of 10,165.21. So that's the one, and I don't know just how the treasurer account would handle it, because it went in, because I needed, I wanted to have that figure as close to possible, and if it got resolved tonight, it could go on this payroll. If it gets deferred or held, then that's, nobody...
You said it was for 10,000, how much?
10,165.21. That's probably still sitting in the accountant's box, today wasn't her day, her office hours day, so that's probably still sitting there, in there. And again, that was from, that was from the, oh, there it is, April 19th to 5/31. So five and a half weeks, five and a half weeks for 10,000.
So I have a, I have a question regarding this, actually, very explicitly. What would stop us from going to, following the same payroll schedule as other departments?
Every two weeks?
Just paying every two weeks.
In the past, and even here, doing it once a month, it was just a question of very old-school stuff, just saving on the process.
Okay.
I mean, I could do it...
Believe it or not, there's a lot of other processes related to payroll that would be much simplified.
Okay.
If we moved to just do it every two weeks, like everybody else.
Because my plan now is, this one's due, not to cut you off, but I already did.
You already did. Go ahead, it's okay.
My train of thought gets derailed, so I would like to, my thought was, yeah, I did this one to wrap up knowing where we are on these types of sessions and Mr. Clark's types of sessions going into Thursday. The next one would be due two weeks hence, I was going to do that one, so we had another firm number mid-June.
Right.
And then the only last one would be the partial one as of the end of June.
Yeah.
So that one. So even then, doing one, even going through the mechanics of creating it, whether or not it gets processed, or will we wait and do the next partial one and put them all together as one omnibus payroll, just to get through that.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, and I understand why historically they may have done it that way, but now that we're in, and remember, a lot of your procedures were back in the day when it was like...
Saving checks.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Literally, like, we're talking about, what was his name, Duncan and Benoit, like, you know, not wanting to even look at each other and, or be in the same building at the same time. So like, it's a very different, like, financial workspace that we're in right now, and I think this might be...
I mean, myself, when I put in for reimbursements for something, I usually wait until I've already stacked one before I even put it in.
Yeah, and honestly, you should do...
Same type of thing, like, I don't want to cut my check, myself a check for $3 one month and $12 the next month, or...
Understood, though, again, letting some of that stuff sit is probably less advisable than it might have been.
We'll finish up fiscal '25 definitely, but we'll just hit the ground running on fiscal '26 the same way. Town North Brookfield pays their firefighter, their fire department twice a year. How do you keep track of that? How you...
I think every two weeks would be a good way to hit the ground running for fiscal...
But like you said, going, you know, decades past was, well, we're saving on, we're saving on cutting those checks every two weeks, and...
So let me ask you this, you got a couple of trainings to do or a couple of events in June, can we just, can we just cut the training in June just to save the budget and...
Well, he already had one of them, is part of what he's just said.
I get it, but can we do a little more?
My only request is, again, I've got three people in a certification preparation...
Yeah, I'm not expecting you to cut that.
Okay, if I can keep those three, because they've actually, they've accommodated their personal schedule, their work schedules, and to do that, if I keep them on, I can, I can talk to the crew and just say, look, guys, this is the way it is. You know, we're, I don't want to herald it, we are a team player.
Okay.
You know, internally, externally.
Is there anything that you feel is absolutely critical of the...
We're not in the middle of anything, if we're in the middle of medical first responder, the middle of hazardous materials, that'd be one thing, but we're not.
Okay.
Those are generally over winter, those are the time when we can't go outside anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, when you're stuck, when you're stuck inside, you might as well be stuck in the classroom.
Yeah.
You know, a day like today, you don't want to say, hey, we're going to go outside and die by PowerPoint, no. So I can work on that. So the call volume, so like I said, how you handle the 10,165 is the most pressing. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll have a better idea on that, and like I said, the next two, the next two Monday nights are, well, we've got our, not to throw a plug in, we've got our big fundraiser, and that takes up the next two Monday nights anyway. The next two, hey, guys, take the night off, or if you want to, everybody's, they're always welcome to come up.
I'm sure they're going to take the night off, I'm sure they're going to...
We'll come up, we'll, you know, go over something, and it just won't hit the bucks, and, you know, that's, that's the way it is.
Let them know we appreciate their efforts and thank them for us, and we're just trying to get through to the end of the year.
So, yeah, I actually started the evening with Mr. Clark's group, he said everything was kind of hinging on here, but again, I did a question from Sharon, Sharon about priority, so, because, because it is, and a little bit of background, so going back to your point, where Sharon only sees these people every couple, every month, every six weeks, she goes in and reactivates it, so I always give her a heads up anyway, and she's, oh, yeah, I need this, or this paperwork's all set, that type of thing, so she's aware of it, but she also, she sees the books too, it's like, yeah, 10,000, he's got 300.
Yeah.
You don't need to be a math whiz to...
Figure out that there's a problem there.
Right, so, you know, however, however that ends goes of it, so be it. If, you know, we wait till, however you want to handle it, just, again, and I know this is going to have, make sure those two are in the loop, so when they're doing, they're doing the warrant, they're not, you know, that, because department meeting, we talked about in terms of ambulance, you know, this all has to be in their hands by Thursday noon, by Thursday noon, she's going to realize, and you're going to hear pitter-patter coming upstairs like, um...
We'll be pitter-patter, we'll be...
No, it'll be a little bit more, yeah, so.
And just to make sure we're all on the same page, so what I understand is, we're going to utilize whatever the remaining part of that testing certification is...
Whatever that figure that...
We're going to utilize probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,500 or so for the current expense, that's currently in your expenses, if we deduct at least part of the money for the garage...
There's a strong possibility, barring any major outbreak of anything, that, with the exception of the 10 here, that's already sitting.
Correct.
2377, and what I can hold off on apart from, I mean, honestly, when you see the warrant that got submitted today, it's a lot of little stuff. It's the end of the year, which is not always really enjoyed, but you walk into any school in the first, last week of June, you've got a truckload of copy paper, you know, that type of thing. So it was a little catch-up stuff. Oh, I need this hardware. I really need this. Just get off the books there. It's the, the expense that went in today. You can make fun of my book, but it's never crashed and it's never been fried by a power failure. $1987, but the things, you know, like, the charter bill, obviously, you know, Hulmer for $8.50, Clem's for $100, Dollar Journal for $77, not super anything, it's just cost of doing business. So, and the only other one that I asked you about was, are we doing anything with the balance on municipal heating fuel?
I'm going to be talking to Lori about that tomorrow.
Okay, because same type of thing, if I can't address it now, you get the price from the vendor now, you're looking at saving 20, 30, 35 cents a gallon on heating oil now as opposed to if I wait till the conventional time, oh, November 1st, I had to turn it on, I need to buy it. We're saving it now. It's a short-term thing, and short-term, when you're off this much, doesn't seem like much, but it could be, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So, yeah, however you feel.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right. Have a good night.
All right, anything else? We're good. Thank you, folks.
Thanks.
All right, so we'll have another transfer probably next week.
Probably.
So the resignation of Conservation Commission, Megan and Michael Metz.
Motion to accept their resignation with regrets.
You have a point of order, sir. What's the transfer going to be on this? What do you transfer, what was involved?
Oh, the, well, I guess the original question...
They still have to, they still have to do the math.
The math's not complete.
Okay, do the transfer on this?
No.
No, no, we're holding off until...
He still has money in his account, and we're trying to get through him. So do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Approve select board minutes for 5:15.25.
One of the motions goes through immediately for 5:15.25.
So I guess...
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'll entertain a motion through adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything in here that I need to keep? I recycle it all. Hey, I can recycle. You just do it without even taking it home.
Yeah, actually, you guys can look. We have the numbers, and Lori's confident with the numbers.
Busy, busy.
She's confident with the numbers.
Busy, busy.
You guys can approve it, but then they're not going to probably be able to prove because it's not on there.
All right, good night.
Night, good night.
Well, either way, I'm just trying to, we've already got a meeting going.
You work over in Spencer?
Yeah. You're like, you're there, Karen?
Yeah, I'm there, Karen. And now they're HR ladies, too.
Oh, aren't you lucky? Bet you're learning a lot.
It's a lot.
I'm sure there's a little...
Yeah, there's other little things.
So Ron, do you share with Lori that I listened to her? Even if I, because I had meant to have that conversation last week, but then my week obviously got a little crazy. Right, so.
I will definitely do that.
And hoping kind of that it requiring any amount of gnashing of teeth or pounding the table. And he's usually pretty good about abiding about something like that if it, if it made sense and it was in a, in a respectful request.
I think some of Lori's claims, because right now, the misfulfilling does look like it has a lot of meaning, but the billing has been so messed up, she's almost going to like...
She's paranoid.
Yeah, because I know...
I don't know. I don't know. He is advised. I think he's going to try and fight for it at town meeting.
The shoe oil badges, he's going to be, although you're always betting when you feel you're...
We'll see, though, I don't know.
How long does, does it make sense, keep an eye on it, jump on it July 1, July 2, so it gives us a longer runway? A lot of it depends on Lori's comfort level with her shell game.
Right, absolutely.
And I'll be honest, at this point, she was still working on it, you know, two significant amounts, you know, even today. So hoping certainly by Thursday, when she's back here, that she'll have a little bit more firm grasp of, okay, I've got my little pockets of money that I can, I can use.
We have a good touch, isn't there?
Well, actually, that's what Jeff and I were just talking about. He said he's starting to use it, so it looks like they might have used it for the snow removal.
Hi, Rookie.
Oh, she is? Oh, my God.
You have a dog, do you?
Yeah, we have a dog.
Usually, just deficit spend, snow removal. Why are we reserve funds funding it?
Well, to be honest with you, I didn't even really get a good look at it. Jeff just dropped it off here. There we go.
Yep.
So is this $10,000?
There were transfers for the...
You don't, you don't, you don't, you don't need to do reserve fund transfers for snow unless you don't want to have to deal with it at town meeting. I mean, you can do this, but you're not legally obligated to do this.
There's no warrant article taking...
No, I'm the first to drive.
Well, and if we don't, if we didn't, if we didn't have a snow and ice article on the warrant, shame on us.